We will call the meeting's order at seven o'clock. We are returning from closed session. I'd ask our city attorney to report on that, please.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. City council is in closed session this evening on three items. Conference of legal counsel on existing litigation, City of Galt versus Johnson, Boyce Jeffries versus City of Galt, and then public employee performance evaluation for the city attorney. And there's no action to report on any of those items.
Thank you very much. At this time, we will have the roll call.
Councilmember Powers?
Here.
Singleton?
Here.
Shelton?
Here.
Present. I would invite you to join me in a moment of silent prayer, followed by Troop 119 to lead us in the flag salute.
The audience, please rise. Please remove non-all scouting hats. Prepare to post the colors. Color guard, post colors. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic of the United States, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice. Two. Color guard dismissed. Thank you. Please be seated.
Liz, would you please read the video statements when everyone gets settled here?
Okay, this meeting of the Galt City Council is being videotaped in its entirety and will be cable cast without interruption on Metro Cable 14, the Government Affairs Channel on the Comcast and Southwest Cable Systems. Tonight's meeting can be seen on Channel 14 and will also be webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv this Friday and Saturday mornings at 9:00 a.m. Tonight's meeting can also be seen via live video streaming on the city's website at A DVD copy is also available for checkout from any library branch. Members of the audience wishing to address council should fill out a speaker identification form and give it to the clerk. Please speak into the microphone when addressing council and state your name for the record. Also, please silence all your cell phones. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I would ask for agenda approval or any additions or deletions.
Madam Mayor, staff has two recommended changes on the order of the agenda. First, on item G3, or G4, I'm sorry, under the Finance Department on the loan agreement, we recommend that that item be considered after the successor agency agenda. And then, on the consent calendar, staff would like to pull item E3, Approval of Proposed Salary Range, for discussion.
Okay. Council, are agreeable to these changes?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you.
Just one note, there is a copy of one page out of the minutes in front of you. Just a clerical error. I'm not pulling it off the consent.
You want to move it?
Okay. We do have a committee appointment this evening, and probably if we could move it up, we do have people in the audience that are here for the appointment.
If we could do that after maybe consent?
After consent? Is that okay? Is everybody on time with their appointments?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Go to the public comment, please.
Do we have any presentations?
We do have a presentation.
Oh.
Your presentation.
That's going to be under, oh, okay.
Public comment, sorry. Under Government Code, Section 54954.3, members of the public may address the council on non-agenda items. Speakers may address council on any agenda item during consideration of the item. Speakers shall restrict their comments to issues that are within the subject jurisdiction of the city council and limit comments to a maximum of three minutes. Please fill out a speaker sheet located on the table inside the entrances to the council chambers and forward the completed speaker sheet to the city clerk. Tonight, we have Patrick Boflater.
Good evening, council. Tonight, on the council's agenda, you have a resolution to adopt the Sacramento County animal ordinances into the Galt codes and to update it, to kind of bring it up current. The issue I wanted to address, I read Section 8, that was referenced in the code, and one of the things of concern, both to myself and many members of the community, is the local enforcement aspect of that specific code. The resolution, as I read it, is that we plan on, or we are going to continue with the city's contract with the county of Sacramento to do animal control enforcement. However, in the event that you have a dog at large or a loose dog issue going on here in the immediate area, quite often, when you contact the county with regard to that issue, their response time, if not hours, can sometimes be days. And of course, at such time, you know, the dog, or dogs as it may be, are no longer, you know, in the act of doing what they're doing, or the owners have disappeared, or there is no owner on site or anything. So, what I was just asking the council to take under consideration is that, in the event that you adopt it, that at some future time, that you consider allowing Rusty or some other member of the code enforcement department to be able to respond to calls that are made to code enforcement, to send somebody out to address the concern, or to try to, you know, corral the animal, or deal with the owner, so that, you know, kind of reduce the conflicts and the problems that we have as a result of dogs at large here in the city. And that's all. Thanks.
Okay. And I would mention that this, there will also be a public hearing on this ordinance will continue, so I encourage other people to review it, also, if at future meeting they want to bring their concerns. Did you want to say something?
I was just going to make a comment. There is, we do have some ability within the police department to corral the animals that might be loose. We've been working on getting some catch poles and some kennels and things where we could at least get them secluded and wait for animal control from the county to come and respond, so we at least deal with the imminent health and safety issue that is there. And I don't know if the chief, do you want to address that or not? But if there is public safety, a health concern, you can certainly call, and we will respond immediately and not wait for county animal control to come down and do that.
We actually have the catch poles currently, and we do have some small kennels that we put into our Sally Port, which is inside a garage area. And when we get a call and we end up catching one of those animals that are loose, we actually hold them within the police department until animal control responds. Sometimes, that's the following day, but that's what we're currently doing.
Can I ask a question? If, on the, if there's a number on the tag, do you call the owner? Could we not do that?
Yes, we could. If we had the availability as far as the tag to say who it belongs to. But I believe that licensing comes through the county, and I don't think we have immediate access to that after hours, but that's something I'll check and I'll report back.
Yeah, some, because some owners do, I put tags on all my animals.
Oh, you mean an individual tag for the owner? Yes.
It was just a phone number on it.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
In fact, we do that because it cuts down on everybody's time involved with a loose animal to have the owners come back and get the animal.
Thank you. I would ask the city attorney, is that any way included in this ordinance, that we do have this option to call the police department in emergencies?
It's not addressed, but it obviously doesn't preclude anybody from doing that, but it's not part of the ordinance.
I'm just wondering how we can be sure that people know that that is an option. Not everybody's going to read an ordinance, but not, I think the general feeling is that if there's any problems with animal controls, it's to call the county. But I think it'd be helpful for the citizens to know that they have this option, obviously. Now everybody knows about it.
Well, if it's a health and safety concern, then certainly they should call 911, and the police will be dispatched out there to address it. If it's something that's less urgent, then they can call animal control, and occasionally animal control will call us and say, hey, we're not going to be able to get down there till tomorrow. Can you guys go out and take a look at it? And that's the proper way that it should be handled, so.
So, this isn't something that we'd want to add to our ordinance?
I don't think so, because it's not really a regulation that we want to establish. If it's about getting information to folks as it relates to what members to call, I think that's something that we can accomplish, maybe through our website or other information that we distribute to the public.
Okay. Thanks.
Can I add to that? When we have these catch poles, these are for loose vicious animals. We really don't have the availability as far as the vehicles. We end up putting them in the back, and we take dangerous animals. If it's a non-dangerous animal, we will do what we can as far as to catch them, but we have other calls for service besides just getting the animals. Our biggest priority is, in fact, dangerous animals who are growling, snapping, charging at people.
Okay.
So, that means you won't be using that catch pole for any bulls or cows on the roadway, I assume?
That's correct.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, thank you for that information. Is there, are there any other comments at this time? Public comment?
Good evening, council. I just have last two, one request. I've been talking to a few people out in the public, and usually at the senior centers and stuff like that. The problem that I, it's coming up quite a bit, is they're not getting a copy of the agenda. I know it's probably not a requirement, but they were talking about how they have trouble negotiating computers and actually going from the retirement centers down to take a look at where it's posted, like a post office or something like that. My question is, is there something we can do to, like, post it at one of the retirements? In Pacific, the Galt Place in particular, was it 400, I think, D Street there?
I don't know what their address is, but I know what you're talking about.
Okay.
I don't know.
One of the great things about Galt Place is they have a computer room. They have multiple computer stations where the residents can go, and that they can access the city's agenda online, right there, from the comfort of their own units.
Now, I've been down there, and I didn't see the computers. That's why I'm asking.
I think it's on the third floor, if I remember right. They've got a separate section set up for seniors to go and utilize. I think they've got a few computers set up there.
Now, is there a password they have to go? Do you know anything like that?
I don't know exactly how it is, but I know it's accessible to all the residents that live there.
Okay. All right. But is there a way we can get one, just like mail to them, and just so they can post it on their little bulletin board?
I believe, and the clerk can probably answer the question, there is a list of those that have requested to receive the agenda.
We do have a list of citizens that have requested to receive agendas online. When it's posted online, they get a notice that it's ready to view. So, you know, for the people that don't have electronic access, that could be an issue. We do have a full packet at the library. We also have one in our office. So, we don't really mail out. We do mail out agendas to people that give us self-addressed stamped envelopes.
Correct.
We do have two or three people that do that. So, that's always an option for anybody.
Okay. Well, like I said, the problem seems that they are not able to negotiate some of the technology that we take so much granted for, that I would think nothing of, just on my phone and stuff like that. So, I'm just kind of asking, seeing if there was something we can do, just mail down the agenda or something like that to them, or actually have somebody drop it off.
If you have a name and address or a contact person?
Yeah, I can.
If you could share that with us?
Do you want me to email that to you?
That's great.
Okay.
Can I just add something? I know the manager there, and I know she's very literate, and so I'm sure if anybody in there was asking about agenda, she would have printed it off in about two seconds. So, did you talk to the manager down there, or were you just talking to some of the residents?
Actually, I was speaking with the manager and the general people in there, so I'm surprised she didn't speak up and say, hey, no, I can get this. The problem that I'm hearing is, I don't know how to use a computer, and in my hands, sometimes there's some sort of difficulty of use in that computer. And they're just like, it's so much easier for me to, someone were saying vision, so they were saying it's so much easier. We always go to the bulletin board, which has some of their dances and stuff like that, and they want to have it posted there, so it's something that they pass by all the time, so.
Actually, if you could send me the manager's name and address and phone number, I would be glad to give him or her a call and do a little bit of training, go out there, show them how to sign up for the newsletter, the agendas, anything they're interested in. They can print one copy and post it on their bulletin board, so I'd be happy to go over that with them a couple times if they need it.
That would be great.
Yeah, I could give them a call.
There's a lot of information on our city webpage that they would probably benefit from, so.
Right.
Great. Thanks, Liz.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Are there other public comments at this time?
Sorry. Jeanette Munzel?
Good evening, Chris. My name is Jeanette Munzel, and I live at Emerald Village. And I was reading in the paper yesterday where they're going to widen memory and Twin Cities Road. And I was just wondering where, how far down, is that going to go, the whole area down, or how far of that? I'm just hoping that they don't want to widen it and take out our, you know, the grass area and our trees and our sidewalks.
I'm sorry, what? Widening on Fermoy or on Twin Cities?
Well, they're going to widen both. The paper said they're going to widen both.
Which area were you concerned about?
Memory.
Is the widening of Fermoy?
Uh-huh. Yes.
It's just at the very, at the intersection of Twin Cities and Fermoy. Fermoy's not going to be widened going south.
Oh, okay.
They're not going to be in front of any of the residential neighborhoods or anything.
Oh, great. That's why I wondered. And then, while I'm here, I was wondering if Walmart and the city council would consider putting a stop sign or a stoplight at Emerald Park, so we can get in and out of our park without any problems. That really worries me. It's going to, when Walmart comes in and the traffic starts, we're really going to be, it's going to be hard to get in and out of our park. So, I thought just a stop sign or a stoplight would just be wonderful, because we have to cross and go in and out.
Sandy, do you remember, it seems to me like it's part of the environmental document that there was a requirement that Walmart put in a flashing crosswalk, a light signalized crosswalk. I don't know if there was a stop sign or not, but I remember there being discussion about that. Do you recall that?
Yeah, there is a protected pedestrian refuge area crosswalk with flashing and a refuge area. I can't recall off the top of my head if there's actual stop signs there, but...
Yeah, that wouldn't help getting out with automobiles, with our cars.
Well, there is a stop, there is a four-way stop at the driveways of the Galt Village Shopping Center and the Walmart Shopping Center. So, there will be sort of gaps created, because people will have to stop at that stop sign going up Fermoy. On Fermoy, at the driveways, across driveways of the Rayleigh Shopping Center and then the proposed Walmart Center.
Oh. Okay. But if they would think about it, it would be wonderful. And one more thing, the residents of the east side of Emerald Village asked me, there's a green area between that wall and Walmart, where Walmart's going to be built, and Walmart usually takes care of that. Well, before, there was a lady that they called from Walmart, and she would tell them how to handle the situation and take care of it, because it gets overgrown in there, and that's happening again. Well, she has, she's, they called, and she's left Walmart and gone out of state, and they were wondering who to get in touch with.
You can give us your contact information, and we'll make sure we get that to you.
Oh, I appreciate it very much.
Be great.
Okay. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
And think about the stop sign.
Oh, we will.
You can give your phone number and your name to Sandy, right down here.
Okay. Appreciate it very much.
And thank you for coming. That's all for now. Okay, then, we will go back to the consent calendar, and I would ask you, Liz, to please read it.
We have five items on our consent calendar. Number one, the approval of the minutes of the special and regular meeting of September 4th, 2012. Number two, approval of the city's Galt warrants.
Liz, I understand that number three was pulled. We can actually put that back on the consent unless the council wants to discuss it further. There was going to be a recommended change, but we're not going to recommend that, so it's as is, unless the council wanted to pull and discuss it, otherwise.
I think they leave it on.
You can leave it on.
Leave it on consent? Yes. Okay.
And number three, which is back on the consent calendar, approval of proposed salary range and job description for reclassification of street superintendent position. Number four, reappointment of administrative analyst two to City's County Solid Waste Advisory Committee for the term beginning November 1, 2012, through November 30, 2014. And number five, approval of the treasurer's report for the period ending July 2012.
I would ask if there's any discussion on the consent calendar. If not, I would entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
And a second. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Powers? Aye. Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Councilwoman Shelton?
Shelton's over here.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Pink?
Present. I mean, aye. Okay, the motion is passed unanimously. Next item, please.
Next item, City Council Office, Strategic Plan. Mayor Pink?
This is where we were going to move an item.
Oh.
I'm sorry. I have one.
Want to order, please?
Councilman Shelton has requested to make his appointment to the beautification committee at this time.
I would like to nominate Karen. She's been in the community for a while. She's eager to be a volunteer, which is something I've been striving to get people to volunteer to do. If you would just stand up and be recognized, and so that I don't ruin the last name, could you say your last name for me?
Stichler.
Stichler. So, she's offered to be my representative. I'm hoping that everyone will concur with that.
Great. Would you like to say something, or you're welcome to come to the podium? Or, no, you don't have to, okay.
I gave her the option, mayor, whether she wanted to or not.
I think...
I speak enough.
Good. I'm, if you concur, then she could make it to our beautification committee meeting this week.
Okay.
Liz will be working with her on the next day.
I'm going to see you Thursday.
All right.
Do we need to vote on this appointment, or is it like council?
No, it's just a direct appointment.
Yeah. Okay. So, we're glad to have you. Yes, we are.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, we're going to the strategic plan, and the strategic plan is something the council met a while back, and we had a workshop, and we set up our goals and our objectives for the next six months. So, the first one that we have is enhanced economic development, and going to number four, we're fortunate enough to have Dane White, who's going to make a short presentation. And I have to share with you that, this is a famous young man. He received the award, I wrote it down, as Outstanding Young Agricultural Educator of the Year of the Nation.
Uh, California.
Uh, California. Okay. I almost promoted you a little bit there.
Do you want me to promote it?
You know, I would love to. Thank you.
And he did all this work out of the goodness of his heart, and I know he spent a lot of hours on it. So, we appreciate this wonderful resource the city has.
Oh, thank you. Oh, good evening to the council and audience members. I really appreciate you giving me the opportunity to be here tonight. I love the City of Galt, and so I was really happy to be able to participate in this, and thank the mayor for including me in this operation, as well as my students. And so, my students and I were approached a while ago by the mayor to look at how we as the City of Galt can actually utilize some potential funding sources that are out there to develop something within our city that can enhance employment and bring jobs to Galt that are meaningful and maybe a little higher wage position, as well as something that taps into kind of the wheat element of our city logo and really tie in our agricultural history. So, that was kind of an identified need, and so what we did is we started to do some research on what availability is there for some kind of innovative development here in Galt that can bring something new and special and unique to our town. And so, we came across this concept that's kind of a burgeoning idea across the United States called a food hub. And so, our proposal really is structured around the development of a food hub for the City of Galt that would utilize really a lot of local energy in agriculture and entrepreneurship, as well as our local infrastructure opportunities here within our city. We also found that there's some connection between this food hub concept with CCOG's Specialty Crop Block Grant that they received through the Rural-Urban Connection Strategy. And so, there is a lot of opportunity for this. And I'll give you a very abridged version of what I gave to the mayor, but Liz does have this presentation, so you're welcome to have that and take it and look at it at any point. Initially, this inspiration came from something that's happening in Sacramento with the California Homemade Food Act, which basically is trying to give the power of food back to local citizens and local communities. And as you probably well know, anytime we have a bake sale, we have to go through about a hundred pieces of paperwork just to sell cookies. And there was maybe a slight bit of sanity in Sacramento that said, hey, let's maybe change that a little bit and give people the power to develop food infrastructure again. And so, with that kind of in the back of our head, and knowing that the City of Galt has some opportunity, we looked deeper into this food hub concept, which you can see is in the italicized portion of that slide defined. It's basically being a physical location where food is either aggregated, processed, or distributed, or some combination of all of those, in a way that supports small and mid-sized farmers and gives power back to local communities. The United States Department of Agriculture under the Obama administration's really taken a lot of initiative in this local food thing, and they've got this Know Your Farmer, Know Your Food Initiative that has a lot of dollars behind it. And there's a whole task force within there that involves nine different agencies for the development of food hubs. In addition, the state of California has a food hub program as well. The business model of that you can see is in blue. Basically, there's kind of a two sides, which if we know anything about the business of agriculture, or really any product, there's usually about a thousand steps within there. And so, this basically takes all those steps and condenses them into something much more reasonable and logical. And so, the food hub that we're proposing really takes on the aggregator and processor components to all the above, basically serving as a site that goes in between the growers that we have surrounding our community to the people who live in our community. The tasks, and I'll give you a much shortened version of this, but basically, they work with people in their community as their number one client to serve them, both on the producer's side and on the consumer's side, to provide product differentiation in such a way that they can have premiums for their products. They work to become socially and economically viable elements of their communities, and they try to provide local food to local families. It sounds pretty pie in the sky, you know? It's very idealistic, but when you look at the research, we can see that there's actually data that says this works, and in communities like Galt demographically. And we know that there's a disconnect between this growing demand for local and regional foods and the ability to actually get that food to people. You can look at the numbers kind of in the subbullets below, and all the data says that people want local food, and it's selling if we can get that food to them. And so, you know, 83% of people want it, 89% of fine dining restaurants, you can look in Sacramento, and we can see that the demand is there. And local food, I mean, even in three years climbed from 4.8 billion to 7 billion in 2011. So, the dollars and cents on the demand end are there. We know that on the supply end, that there's some real challenges with people, that small and mid-sized farms, and if we look at those that surround Galt, we know that they're there. They have a really hard time finding those midpoints. Small farms often don't have the logistical wherewithal to market and differentiate their goods in a way that can command a premium price. And then, you know, the mid-sized farms are often just at a management standstill, because they can't usually break into the large markets. And so, we're seeing small and mid-sized farms, like those in our area, really decline in their capacity to serve the needs of America. And so, that's part of the federal initiative, is knowing that that data is very realistic. The United States Department of Ag did do a survey on some food hubs. They surveyed 42 food hubs that are in operation throughout the United States, and it's a pretty young industry. Most are, you know, under six years of age, 60% are under five years. There's kind of a magic dollar that most food hubs, to be successful, will make about a million dollars. And so, there is a target element that people can shoot for when developing a food hub like we're envisioning for Galt. And we know that about the median number of suppliers to a food hub is 40, which is certainly doable, given the agricultural productivity of this region. The USA did some follow-ups. Basically, out of the 10 that they followed up with, seven have projected that they will break even within one to three years. And all 10 that are financially viable do have sales of $1 million or more.[1793.83] So this is becoming something that's plausible and realistic. Benefits to Galt, statistics indicate that two point two jobs are created for every hundred thousand dollars in local food sales. So if we take that million dollars and kind of extrapolate that figure, twenty-two jobs specifically in Galt would be created. But we also know that as we look at things like alfalfa fields that are in our area, those are often converted to high-dollar produce, which needs additional labor to, to make that happen. And then the multiplier effect that economists know about, for every dollar spent locally, it then creates that kind of ripple, one point four to two point six times that initial dollar. There's some possibilities for business structures, and so that would be the purview of kind of the next step of this committee potentially that could take this on, but there's a lot of options. And, and when we look at successful food hubs, they may be owned by, by a municipality, they may be a cooperative, a nonprofit, or an LLC. And we certainly have an agriculture industry in this area that would support several of those varieties of business structures. The vision overall, and you can see some pictures that have been taken, that are, that are pretty ideal, really, when we're looking big picture at this. It would be a multi-pronged approach, the first of which would be to develop an actual facility here in Galt that serves as an aggregator, distributor, processor, here in our town for locally grown produce. The second would be to actually develop a business that would create a regional food brand that creates a value-added product line that can be marketed in nearby urban areas. And the third would be to hire a project director to oversee all these elements. The first area to develop the facility would be ideally somewhere in downtown Galt, which we know there's some momentum happening to create a really livable and walkable area in that, in that part of our community. And so this food hub would basically take something that's being underutilized in that portion of town, reimagine it as being the, the, the anchor of a, a food and entertainment corridor where people want to be. And so this would be a, a place where people can go to purchase products, but also to actually work. This, this facility would serve multiple functions, the second of which is probably the one I'm most excited about, and we've seen examples of this really from across California, that we know, and this goes back to that whole Homemade Food Act, it's very difficult for a food entrepreneur to break into the restaurant world, or to break into food sales. And so what San Francisco and other communities have done really is tap into number two, which I'll talk about very briefly, because I know my time's running tight, and I'm very mindful of your evening. This facility could incubate food entrepreneurs, as well as really do the, the food packaging element, but also could eventually maybe even be expanded to include restaurant space, or to hold classes and events for our community as well. The leasable space would be modeled after something called La Costina in San Francisco, which is basically a leasable facility. The community of Arcata, which is near where I grew up, actually has a very similar facility that somebody can rent for twelve dollars a day, and they can actually make food in a certified kitchen that can then be sold legally out somewhere in their community that will be shipped. And so each of those users would be a separate business entity, but both San Francisco and the small community of Arcata, which is half the size of Galt really, are seeing a lot of success with this leasable space concept. Charlottesville has a, Virginia, similar demographically, very successful food hub, sells to a lot of different entities, including schools, restaurants, grocery stores, et cetera. There's some estimates of the logistics, it could be about, about a million dollars to make this happen, but I think that could be something that when you examine the funding sources that are available through the USDA, as well as CDFA, we know that there are dollars available. And I've given the mayor, as well as the executive director of the city, Chamber of Commerce, and Critterius, the city planner, I've given them a whole thick packet on potential funding opportunities for this. You know, I of course got on Google Maps and looked at where this could go, you know, perhaps somewhere downtown where people who live in Galt place can walk there, people who eat at Brewster's or Public Grill can walk there, where the new movie theater's going. It's all a very mobile, walkable site. So with some vision, it, I think, pretty easy to imagine. The branded food line, the, the second element, you know, I looked at some pictures of food brands, and it's really amazing, I think, what people are willing to buy when they feel that it has a story. I don't know if any of you get Sunset Magazine, but my family gets Sunset Magazine, and I happened to be peeling through it, and I saw something called Mm Local Foods, and it was really highlighted in Sunset. And I thought, man, I've never heard of that before, but what a cool concept. Basically, this entity that I'm describing, that we would have here in Galt buys from all these local food producers in Colorado, it takes their food, and it makes it into something else that they then turn around and sell to hide, to hide expenditure consumers. And so it takes things like pears, which we have obviously aplenty within a hundred-mile area, and, and markets those things in, in a fashion that people actually want to buy through a harvest share, a community-supported ag program. So, you know, you look at those, and you think, man, those are pretty. People want to buy those for gifts for their families, they want to give those to business associates, and they're willing to pay for them. And those are actually simple things, like tomatoes, peaches, pears, that are just dressed up differently and add a lot of value to a local economy. This would also create an incentive, develop a story. You know, I think that Galt really could benefit from having a really strong established brand. So when people think of Napa, they know wine, when people think of the, the Southbound maybe Telleri, they think of, of dairies. When they think of Galt, they might think, ah, really delicious local food. And so if you want to look up in Sunset Magazine, it took a little scanned picture of it, but we can see that Mm Local brand is, is, is becoming pretty hot in Colorado, and they sell through a lot of different possible outlets. But I think, man, we certainly have a lot of opportunities within a close proximity to our beautiful community. And then the third suggestion for the food hub is to actually hire a person to run the food hub. And so a coordinator who is maybe grant-funded, who, who would basically grow total product sales, but also establish this really wonderful community facility where people can come and work and grow and learn in a way that makes themselves sustainable, and gives them the chance to become a really vested part of our town. Some additional information, you know, I think that there's some opportunities to fit into the CACOG's blueprint for sustainable communities by looking at some transportation options and how we make this a viable element onto the whole region's transportation issues. Maybe someday down the road, and again, I'm the naive high school teacher, we could create a, a freight and passenger rail facility here in Galt that brings foot traffic, but also freight capacity to our area. A future, long-term, I think it'd be incredible if we could grow this into something that's a real source of pride in our local foods. And maybe we could develop a Galt Food Truck Festival, and these are high-end classy food trucks that we're seeing, you know, across the country in, in wealthier areas, and it draws people in. You know, it's that the East Bay Oakland is kind of now known as this food truck hub. And so, man, how cool would it be to have a Galt Food Truck Festival with our food hub at the center of all that activity? And then also, you know, there certainly there's a lot of byproducts, those could be going to local, local charities in a place where people really need it. Next steps, I think the local agriculture industry would be primed to have a discussion about what, what can happen here, and we know that the agriculture industry does have some leverage in making things happen. And so there are three possible suggestions of places to go for further information. Certainly, a lot of feasibility studies need to happen. My students and I have some capacity to create quality research, but not the kind that I would ever want to sign off and say, spend a million bucks on it. And then to develop actual budgets and examine real funding sources to make this happen, I think are the next steps for this project. But, big picture, I think we have some incredible opportunities, and I appreciate the chance to have conducted this research, and I, I really am in love with this food hub idea because I think it could put Galt on the map in a meaningful, realistic, but also pretty visionary way. So I thank you for your time, thanks for giving up so much of your evening, and I appreciate it very much. Please let me know how I can continue to help this project along.
Thank you. I think we need to give him a hand. That's a good one. Thank you. Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for that presentation, and I think one of the things that we always look to our youth for is vision for the future, and you certainly came through this, and we'll continue to work on this. Thank you so much.
Great.
The next item, then, we're going to improve financial stability and maintenance of reserves. Item number one, hire a public accountant to perform redevelopment agency, successor agency auditing functions pursuant to AB fourteen eighty-four, and I would ask our finance director to weigh in on that, please.
Good evening. Thank you. Actually, on tonight's agenda, we have staff is recommending to enter into an agreement with Maids and Associates. They are a current auditing firm, and they actually have received approval by the County Audit Controller's Office, so that is on tonight's agenda. And just jumping ahead, I noticed that the other item that is highlighted is the actual due diligence review work, and that, once we enter into this agreement this evening, we estimated it would take about thirty days. So that, we are a little bit behind October first deadline. There are no penalties, and I'll go into that a little bit more with the staff report, but we will not make that October first deadline, and everything is really kind of contingent on approval this evening by the city and the successor agency to enter into that agreement.
So we're right on top, on top of it.
We're on top of it.
Okay. All right, let's go to the next objective. Provide services and facilities that are responsive to community needs. This is item number two. Recommend to the public safety committee and to the city council for action, city programs for at-risk use. Do you want to talk about that at all, Councilman Singleton?
Actually, I'm going to be meeting with the, the chief this Friday on this subject.
Okay. Did you want to add anything to that?
We've been researching as far as some other programs that are successful in other cities, and I have a meeting with a council member on Friday, and that's some of the discussion we're going to have.
Okay, so we'll, uh, hear back after your meeting.
Yes, ma'am.
For the progress.
Yep.
Okay, next is improve community involvement in two-way communication, and that is item number three. Study the feasibility of establishing a community coalition consisting of service clubs, churches, and not-for-profit organizations to coordinate community events and activities, and obtain volunteers, and make a recommendation, recommendation to the city council for action. There's a lot of words there, but basically what we'd like to do is get all of our little clubs that are having events, planning for the next year, to come together so that we're not competing against each other. Instead of competing, we'll be supporting each other. And a lot of our service clubs today have gotten smaller, and it would be great if they had more volunteers to pick from and more support. So I've met with Gracie Mawson, who has done something similar to this in Lodi, and I believe Rancho Cordova. And she's working with me on it right now, we're putting together a letter that we'll be sending out to the businesses, the churches, the nonprofits, to invite them to come together and see if there's an interest in formalizing this. Is that it? Okay. So where are we now, through all that information?
Next item, under City Attorney's Office, adoption by reference to Title Eight of the Sacramento County Code Regarding Animals.
Good evening again, Mayor, councilmembers. As was discussed earlier tonight, the city contracts with the county of Sacramento for animal control services. And if you look currently at our municipal code, we have incorporated a provision of the Sacramento County Code into the Galt Municipal Code, and that is our animal control ordinance. The ordinance that is incorporated into the municipal code was actually the version adopted by the county of Sacramento about forty-two years ago in nineteen seventy. So when a, currently, when a, when a code enforcement officer, an animal control officer, comes to the city of Galt and crosses the line from the county into the city of Galt, what we're asking that officer to do is to switch from enforcing the current version of the Sacramento County Code to the county code that existed forty-two years ago. So the purpose of bringing forward this item this evening was to update our municipal code by adopting the current version of the Sacramento County Code relating to animal control. The county has adopted probably about a dozen amendments to that ordinance over the last forty-two years, the last major revisions being in two thousand and seven. So the main purpose is to get us in sync with, with the entity that is in fact implementing and enforcing animal control provisions within our, within our community. The process for adopting a segment of another jurisdiction's code, which is what we'd be doing here, would, assuming that the, that the council introduces the ordinance tonight, would be that a public notice would be published in the paper over the next several days indicating that the council would be holding a public hearing on the adoption, potential adoption of an ordinance that would incorporate that element of the county code into the Galt Municipal Code. The notice would indicate that this would be brought back to the council at our second meeting in October, October sixteenth, for a public hearing. At that point in time, the council could take public testimony, and then after the public testimony could decide whether or not it wanted to in fact adopt by incorporation that provision of the, the county code. The county code provision that we're looking to incorporate is in fact very comprehensive. It covers everything from dog licensing to impoundment, to dealing with vicious animals. It's about a fifty-page document, and a copy of it is in your packet this evening. So with those comments, I'd be happy to answer any questions the council asks.
And this document will be available to the public? How? Through the city clerk's office?
It would be, yes, it'd be available through the, through the clerk's office. It's something that we can certainly put up on our website, it's, it's also available on the, the county website, but we would have it available in the clerk's office, which is a government code requirement.
Okay. So then the public would have an opportunity to review it, and at the October meeting that you mentioned, make their comments. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Are there any questions at this time from the council, or comments?
Yes.
Councilman Cruz?
Yes. Um, just to make sure I'm clear on this, although we're adopting this, it's not going to affect the contract as far as the amount we're paying annually, correct?
No, this, this doesn't have anything to do with the contractual relation with the county. It only has to do with updating the, the laws that we're asking them to enforce within our community.
And they're not going to come back to us, say, well, since you've adopted our ordinances, now you can pay thirty thousand instead of seventeen?
Well, I don't know what, I don't think they're going to give us a price break, and I can't speculate what they might come back with in a year. Our motivation in, in bringing this forward for at least council consideration is to make it a, a little bit easier and more consistent so that when a animal enforcement officer comes within our community, they're already familiar with the code that they, that they enforce outside of our boundaries, and they would know that it's the same laws regardless of which side of the line you're on.
So it's all on the same page.
Right.
Are there any other comments, or, or, Mayor? Yes. I, I am glad that we're going to look at it, because there's so much in here that I don't like, being an animal lover, which is, you know, and it's so big, and so, you know, I, I realize that it's the county, and we've got to go with by what they say, and there's, I'm glad that the gentleman brought it up, and I'm glad that we're not totally voting on it tonight, because I think that needs to be looked into more in depth than just standing, you know, than just looking at this, the whole packet with this. And I understand it comes from the county, but there's some things in there that I have some issues with. Okay. And of course, you will have that opportunity.
Yes, that's a baby.
Yeah, as will the public. Okay. Any other comments? Then what we're asked to do tonight is introduce the ordinance, raise the first reading, and read by title only an ordinance repealing and replacing Chapter six point oh four of the Galt Municipal Code Regarding Animals, and adopting by reference title in of the Sacramento County Code, animals. So this is what we're asked to do tonight. Is there a motion to that effect?
I got to say something.
Oh, excuse me.
I don't, we're not adopting it tonight.
No, we're introducing it.
Well, they were adopting it.
It's just to introduce the ordinance, and then it will come, assuming the introduction is, is passed, and it will come back on October sixteenth for consideration for adoption.
Okay. Thank you for clearing that up.
I'm prepared to make the motion. I just, can you clarify when that meeting is going to be for the public? Is that the October?
Is it the second?
Yes, it's the second meeting, and the reason for the two-meeting delay is we usually bring it back at the next meeting, but in order to allow sufficient time for the public notice, and the opportunity for the public to come in and review the ordinance, we thought it was prudent to give two meetings until it comes back for, for adoption.
Okay.
Excellent.
I'm still prepared to make the motion.
Okay, we have a motion from Councilwoman Shelton, seconded by Councilwoman Cruz. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Shelton?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Pink?
Aye. Motion passed unanimously. Ready for the next item?
Next item, under City Attorney's Office, Egg Lane Chicken.
Okay, it's all about animals tonight. And, uh, this, this ordinance was first This, uh, this ordinance, uh, was first, uh, discussed by the City Council back in April. Where City Council directed staff to prepare an ordinance allowing for the keeping of egg-laying chickens in the city. After consideration earlier this summer, the council directed that this matter go to the Planning Commission, uh, for consideration. Uh, the ordinance that was presented to the Planning Commission for consideration provided that, uh, the keeping of four or fewer egg-laying chickens on a parcel improved with a detached single-family dwelling purely for home consumption would in fact be lawful, subject to certain, uh, conditions. The conditions include such items as ensuring that the chickens are confined in a pen, a coop, or run area, um, that they're kept, uh, within the, uh, setback requirement ten feet from side and rear property lines, that the enclosures are well-maintained on a, on a regular basis, uh, that the chickens are provided with adequate food, water, ventilation, that, uh, feed is stored in a manner that prevents spoilage and access by other animals, uh, such as rodents. Um, it expressly prohibits any roosters from, uh, being kept on any parcel of property located in the city. Uh, after, uh, some limited, uh, public testimony, there was about three people that spoke on this ordinance at the, uh, Planning Commission. Uh, the, uh, Planning Commission voted, uh, to recommend to the City Council by a vote of four to zero that the council not adopt the ordinance allowing, uh, egg-laying chickens. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions the City Council has.
Um, do you want to ask questions now, or would you rather hear public comments?
I would like to hear public comments.
Okay. Do you think we have some?
Say we're all ready?
Evening, Mayor and Council. This is the first time I've, uh, addressed anything or made comment about anything on the agenda, call it an item if it's correct. Uh, so the other, the other thing I'd like to share with you is, uh, there's an anniversary for me this month, in fact, this week. Twenty years ago, I came to the city in nineteen ninety-two, and I'm glad I made the move. Tonight, I'm, uh, here to, uh, ask you to consider, uh, well, not ask you to consider, let me reword that, I'm a little bit nervous when I get up here, so bear with me if you will. I'm kinda wondering about this, uh, egg-laying ordinance thing. Uh, that's going to kinda affect the code enforcement section of the city. And within the last twelve years or quite often, I've had to call on our great code enforcement officer, Rusty Hughes, and he's come to my side, and we've got a lot of things, uh, resolved. He's always been there, he's a gentleman that never complains about anything, he just does his job, and, uh, always pleasant and likes to be around. To the point is, one time he had trouble tracing down a bank about something going on, or foreclosed or something, and I was able to, uh, assist him in just that one thing, and I felt I just wanted to do something to help this fine fellow. I'm afraid this ordinance is gonna overburden him. More, uh, really, uh, I asked him how many, uh, on his staff, he says one, one person in his office along with him. You go to call, uh, Jason, I mean Jason, but I mean, uh, looking at Jason over here, the city manager. Go to call Rusty, and he's always out in the field. And, uh, but he will always get back to you. So, uh, I urge you not to adopt this, I really do. Uh, I think it's gonna open up a can of worms, I think it's gonna be more of a problem as time goes on, and, uh, I just don't think it's a real good thing to go for right now. Okay? I want to thank you for this time.
Thanks, ladies, and congratulations on your twenty years. Are there other? Diane Cannonberg.
Good evening, Council. My name's Diane Cannonberg, and I too am here to speak about the chickens. Um, I am confused about the, uh, setback of where the chickens would be. It sounds like in order for them to be, uh, far enough away from their, their house, they're gonna be up against my fence. And I ha- I have concerns about that, uh, for a lot of reasons, but mainly, uh, the health reasons, they smell. Uh, and also, I'm highly allergic. So I, if they're, if they're up in my corner of my backyard, I won't be able to go out there. Um, and also, they, I, I, I agree with the previous speaker, um, if you are opening a can of worms, you're gonna start this. There already are chickens in Galt. And, uh, there's one somewhere near us somewhere, and it, um, I know that the code enforcement officer has gone out there and spoken to those people, um, not, not, you know, not my personal request, but somebody, you know, and, um, the chicken were, she said, well, there were, there are no roosters. Well, you can hear him in the morning. And then one day, her mother almost fell over the chicks. Now, unless it was some sort of immaculate conception, there was a rooster there with those chick, those hens. And so I think that that, that too is gonna be very difficult to police. And, and I don't know that, do we want that? Do we wanna have? We have other issues that I think are more important to deal with than somebody going around and checking chickens for their sex. And, and then, you know, measuring if they're too far from the fence and, but, you know, like I said, just personally, I don't want to, um, I, I can't be around them. I can't. And if they're close to my house and within their legal distance, then I can't be. So I just ask you to consider a lot of the options, uh, other than adopting these chickens. I mean, I understand that people want the eggs or anything, but there, there's a lot of, as the young man, the agriculture, young man said earlier, there's a lot of resources in Galt. If you want to, if you want low-cost chicken eggs, you can go out and get them. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Diane. Are there any other, uh, comments? Council? Vice Mayor, you're giving me that look.
Uh, no, I, you know, I'll just reiterate what I said last time. I'm a resounding no on that for, uh, one, the main reason is there's no way we're gonna be able to regulate that because we do not have the resources to do it. Um, and, uh, I'm just gonna stop there because I don't have to read any of the other stuff then.
Well, I know that, um, council members are asked by citizens to bring something, uh, forward that they're interested in, and I know that Councilman Cruz, uh, did just that. Um, not that he necessarily wants to have chickens in his backyard, but he was trying to, um, respond to some of the citizens that feel like it's nice to have your own vegetables growing and maybe your own chickens with your own eggs. Um, my personal feeling is, uh, number one, we have a planning commission that, um, we have appointed, and we ask them to give us their advice. And, um, unless they're way off from what we believe, I, I believe we should follow their advice. Uh, there's always two sides to everything, and, and some people would love to have their chickens, and some people don't want them. But in this case, I would not be able to support this ordinance because, um, Planning Commission has, um, uh, listened and has recommended that we not accept the ordinance. So I would open it to other comments.
Well, I, thank you, Madam Mayor, if I might. I wanna thank Mark for bringing this up because, um, it goes to show that, um, you citizens in town here are important to us. Um, you're all on the same plane to us, so no matter how silly you think that it might be, come and talk to us about it, ask us if we think it's important enough, and enough people in the community would like to see something happen, um, bring it to us because you're all on the same plane, feeling the same level, so, you know, nobody's any better or worse than, uh, than any other citizen, so you're all important to us, and that's what we're here to do, to work for you. So thank you, Mark, for bringing that up here, uh, to the agenda.
Okay. Any other comments?
Sure, why not? I've given it some thought. You know, I was sitting here kinda calculating how people think I'm not doing anything, but which I do, I really am. But I counted just the dogs that are around me in about fourteen homes, there's sixteen dogs. I live next to the county. I got chickens, ducks, rabbits, goats. I've got some, uh, horses. Why not chickens? No. I'm not in favor. It's, it's too much of a, of a problem.
Can I just add one more thing? I think it's great what you said, and from Mark bringing it up, it makes for, uh, uh, interaction with talking to the community and seeing who's for and who's against, and it was a great idea of Randy's to bring it up to the Planning Commission so that we could have some conversation there. And, uh, I know all of us, you know, I was, the truth of the matter was, I was driving to work today, and two of my neighbors, uh, will always do their running, slide me down and, you know, they mean their input on it. So I think it's great that we bring things here that people really wanna have a conversation about, and...
And I would say that I've had input from people at church, neighbors, and, uh, and I have to say, most of, um, the comments I've gotten have been not in support of, um, having chickens in your backyard. So I guess we're to the point now where I'm gonna pass the question, um, the city attorney's looking at me like...
Well, I was just gonna say that if there's nobody that does make a motion to introduce this matter, then we just consider it, uh, matter completed, and we could move on to the next item on the agenda.
And I think that's what I'm hearing, uh, clearly. So, with that, we will move on to the next item and thank everyone who has shared their input with us, and the people on the street jogging, and the people at church.
And other ones, yeah.
And thank you all for your opinions. Okay, now...
The Finance Department has been moved to, after the successor agency, so we're now at Communications.
Do we have any written communications that anyone wants to share? If, if not, we will adjourn to the successor agency to the former redevelopment agency. And at this time, I'd ask for a roll call.
Board members, Powers, here. Singleton?
Here.
Shelton?
Here.
Cruz?
Here.
Payne?
Here.
Uh, do we have any public comment on this item?
I have no speaker seat.
Then, uh, we will go to the next item.
Okay, the next item is approval of the minutes of the special meeting of September fourth, two thousand and twelve. Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Roll call vote, please.
Board members, Powers?
Aye.
Singleton?
Aye.
Shelton?
Aye.
Cruz?
Aye.
Payne?
Aye.
Uh, motion passed unanimously.
Next item, approval of contract for services with Maes and Associates and loan agreement between the City of Galt and the successor agency of the Galt Redevelopment Agency.
Good evening, Chair and Board Members. This evening, staff is recommending that the successor agency adopt the resolution authorizing the execution of agreement with Maes and Associates to perform the due diligence review pursuant to AB fourteen eighty-four relating to the dissolution of the redevelopment agency. And secondly, accepting a loan from the city in the amount not to exceed fifteen thousand dollars. As you are aware, in two thousand and eleven, the governor signed AB twenty-six, which basically abolished every redevelopment agency, um, as of February first, two thousand and twelve. As part of the twelve thirteen budget, um, packet, the governor signed AB fourteen eighty-four, which made technical changes to AB twenty-six. So, as we're winding down the redevelopment agency, there were several provisions within AB fourteen eighty-four that we brought to the successor agency's attention last month. Some of them dealt with, um, new review auditing steps, some civil penalties if we fail to, um, submit various reports on certain deadlines. And so this evening, what we wanted to talk about and present to the successor agency was the agreed-upon procedures. We were in communication with the county art and controllers offices, see if they were actually going to contract with an auditing firm, an accounting firm, to perform the due diligence review for all of the redevelopment agencies in Sacramento County, or if we should go ahead and hire that firm on our own. So after several emails, they basically advised at the end of July that it would be best for us to contract with our own, with, with a firm. And they recommended either using our existing auditing firm, which is Maes and Associates, or the firm that performed the agreed-upon procedures, which is otherwise known as VTD. Um, we did communicate with both of the firms. They were reluctant to commit into an agreement because the agreed-upon procedures had not been released by Department of Finance. They could not give us the cost because they didn't really know how in detail the actual scope was going to be. It was not an audit, so they, they were in this gray area. Um, Department of Finance actually did release what the DDR, the Due Diligence Review consisted of, and they issued that on August twenty-seventh. And they also issued a statement that says, and I just wanna read up, part of what they released was that, um, several agencies had asked for that October first deadline to be pushed back, and they responded saying that it's a statutory date, and they have no ability to make that change. They do ask that we do our best to meet the deadline. However, they recognize that the extreme time crunch and likely inability for successor agencies to meet the deadline prescribed by the law. So, they basically have told us that we need to keep them posted, to let them know what the status is, do we have anybody on board, and what that estimated timeframe is. We did receive information from the auditing firm, they did come, um, and they are prepared to start the work on it. They did tell us that it would be about a thirty-day delay to perform the due diligence review, so the October first deadline will not be met. Um, they did commit to, uh, ma- meeting the deadline though for the second review, which is for the other funds of the, what was previously known as Redevelopment Agency. Um, so at this point, staff is recommending that the successor agency actually use the current auditor, as they're most familiar with the Redevelopment Agency activities, the financial, um, history. They, the cost will be based on hourly amount not to exceed the fifteen thousand dollars. The proposal that we received from the other firm was actually higher than the fifteen thousand dollars that is being presented this evening. Um, the successor agency does not have sufficient funds, basically, or there are no funds left over in the, what was previously known as the Redevelopment Agency, in the general fund of the Redevelopment Agency. So, the successor agency is asking for a loan to fund those services. It would, would be a loan from the city to the successor agency, um, to perform the due diligence review. So the fiscal impact is that there would be a cost of fifteen thousand dollars for the due diligence review. And the approval of the loan, basically what we would do is include this in the next ROPS, which would be ROPS four, which would be for the July through December two thousand and thirteen period. So there would be a bit of a delay. We have been in communication with Department of Finance if we can include that as a separate enforceable obligation, because AB fourteen eighty-four does provide for, um, the successor agencies to, um, hire and perform those, um, processes necessary to wind down the redevelopment agency. But there is, um, um, they have been issuing comments that we should be picking up, picking it up under administrative allowance, that we believe that it is an enforceable obligation, and so we are asking, as well as entering to the loan, that we also receive direction to include this on the subsequent ROPS that we will be submitting. So with that, again, staff is recommending that you approve, um, staff to enter into the agreement as a successor agency with, um, Maes and Associates to do the due diligence review and accept the, the loan from the city to the successor agency in amount not to exceed fifteen thousand dollars. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to address it this evening.
Okay. Uh, Council, uh, that was a lot of information to digest, but basically, to try to work our way through this whole redevelopment situation, uh, it's difficult, and we appreciate all the hard work you're doing. But comment from Councilman Cruz?
I'm, I'm kinda concerned. Um, more and more, we're, we're putting more and more money towards this on the hope that Department of Finance is gonna come through on these ROPS payments. And now we're at, I think, like, three, if I'm not mistaken, three different loans from general fund into this, hoping that Department of Finance is gonna say, yes, we'll give it back to you. Uh, my issue at this point is, and it's been my issue all along, when is it gonna stop? I mean, right now, it's legalized extortion as far as the legislature's concerned.
Well, I really can't comment on when it, will it will stop. We do know that AB fourteen eighty-four has, um, specific guidelines that must be met in order for us to continue to receive any future allocations. We are familiar with that. Once the due diligence review is, um, accepted by Department of Finance, by the county art and controller, by state controller's office, and if they agree to those items, that they will give us a gold ticket, which basically means it's a notice of completion that says they are in agreement with the information that we presented, and we can continue to proceed with the winding down process of the redevelopment agency. Not having that, then I think that what they did before is, they basically held our property taxes, our sales tax, um, those clawback provisions. They've also imposed the ten thousand dollars a day civil penalty. Now, that isn't really tied into this one aspect of, of the due diligence review, but, um, I never thought fourteen eighty-four would get approval, and some of those clawback provisions would be approved. So, it, it's really hard to say. I, I believe it's our responsibility to continue the functions of what was previously performed by the redevelopment agency and adhere to the law as we know it pursuant to AB fourteen eighty-four.
I understand that. It's just, the, the issue that I have right now is the fact we're damned if we do, damned if we don't.
It, it is very frustrating... It is very frustrating for staff to be reading 1484, trying to understand it, recognizing that it contradicts what we were previously working under, under AB 26, but again, we are trying to do the best that we can in protecting the city's assets as we know them today.
Well, I appreciate all your help with this, Vanessa.
Are there any questions, other questions or comments? City manager, did you have anything to add to that?
No, I think that's accurate. We don't have much choice. The state is creating the rules, they're dictating, you know, what we need to do, and we, at this point, have to kind of follow the rules to the best of our ability, and hope they treat us fairly.
Good luck on that one.
Okay, so if there's no other questions or comments, would you mind reading the recommended action?
More time. Sure. Adopt the resolution of the successor agency authorizing the execution of an agreement with Mays and Associates to perform the due diligence review pursuant to AB 1484 relating to the dissolution of the redevelopment agency, and accepting a loan from the city in the amount not to exceed fifteen thousand dollars for said services.
Okay, you've heard the recommended action. Is there a motion to that effect?
Motion to approve. Where was read?
Councilman Shelton has made the motion, Councilman Singleton has seconded it. Roll call vote, please.
Board members Powers.
Hi.
Singleton.
Hi.
Shelton.
Hi.
Cruz.
Good luck. Aye.
Aye. Motion passed unanimously. At this time, we will adjourn from the successor agency to the former redevelopment agency, and reconvene to the regular meeting, and where are we?
Now, we go to the Finance Department, loan agreement between the City of Galt and the successor agency of the Galt Redevelopment Agency, and appropriation of funds.
Do you have more to say?
There's just a little bit of a difference here, but as the city clerk did read, staff is recommending the recommendation, as she just read into the record. So basically, the information on AB 1484 is correct. The one change I did want to bring to your attention, though, is that we are actually asking not only for the city to enter into the loan agreement with the successor agency, but we are also asking for an appropriation of funds. This is something that we didn't anticipate during the budget process, so there are no funds right now budgeted for this service, so we are asking, in addition to the approval of the loan agreement to enter into, or to authorize the appropriation of funds as well. So if there's anything extra, or any other item that council has thought of, I'd be more than glad to try to address that this evening.
We're speaking of the same fifteen thousand dollars.
That is correct. But on the city's side, we have to loan it to, we have to have the appropriation first. That is correct.
Okay, is the city, are the council members ready to make a motion?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Is there a second? We have a motion in a second. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Powers.
Hi.
Councilmember Singleton.
Hi.
Councilmember Shelton.
Hi.
Councilmember Cruz.
Uh...
Mayor Payne.
Aye. Motion passed unanimously. Thank you. And I believe we are ready to go to the city clerk's report.
Okay, we did the committee appointment, so I'll just give a couple reminders. This Thursday, September 20th, the Deedification Committee will be meeting at 3:30 in the City Hall Community Room. September 24th, the Public Safety Meeting will be held in the Police Community Room at 6:00 PM. On September 27th, the Commission on Aging Meeting at 5:15 in the California Room at Parks and Recreation. On Monday, October 1st, the Galt Youth Committee will meet at 6:00 PM in the council chambers, and that takes us to our next council meeting. Just a reminder, on October 12th, we will be having the Central Galt Interchange Ribbon Cutting.
Does that mean it's going to be open?
It's going to open. It is a Friday. Check the website for a time, tentatively it's set for 3:00 PM, and it will open right after our ribbon cutting.
Steve, you're guaranteeing that, huh?
This will be a soft opening. We won't be ready to turn on the signals and everything. We didn't want to be under the duress of traffic while we're doing a ribbon cutting, and have the confusion, so we will probably do the ribbon cutting on Friday, and then get through the weekend without trying to introduce a change in traffic patterns. That'll let them get all the barricades and things taken care of, and then at some point the next week, we would look to do a formal opening to public traffic.
And then the landscaping comes.
We'll be presenting future recommendations to you on awarding contracts.
Okay.
Well, you're saying a soft opening. I remember Kurt over at Velvet Creamy saying it was a soft opening, he got bombarded. So what are we looking for, the same thing here?
Well, I was responding to the, it'll be open to traffic, right? Well, not quite yet.
But we're getting close.
Yeah, we're going to have to have parking and all kinds of things arranged for us, and this will let us do that without being under threat of public traffic.
Okay. Well, I think that's good news. I think we're all ready for the construction to be over and be back to normal. Thank you. Anything else? Anything else from the staff? Any other comments from staff?
No.
No? Okay. So we'll go to comments by council. I'll start with Vice Mayor Powers.
Well, I'll just start it off, because I'm sure everybody's going to add to it, that we went to the conference in San Diego, and it was a good conference, there were a lot of interesting classes, and had a good time, learned some stuff. Was nice to be with all of us, not happened to deal with issues here, but working on issues that could relate to us here, and seeing some of the way other cities handled certain problems, so it was a very good conference.
Councilman Singleton?
Yes, you know, people hear us talk about conferences we go to. I've got to say, League of Cities puts on a great conference, and you guys think it's all fun and play, but I tell you what, they have some outstanding information that we can utilize in our cities, and it gives us the opportunity to speak to other council persons, city managers and attorneys, about what goes on in their cities, to see if we can make those applications work in our city. So it's a lot of invaluable information, I think it's just wonderful. It was, I love the conferences for the League of Cities. Thank you.
Councilman Shelton?
Yep, just like to say, little flyer after the fact.
Okay.
If you go to one of these conferences, and you feel that you have not a lecture or a presentation to go to, you're wrong. Because the networking alone, just with talking to other elected officials, whether it's a fire chief, a police chief, you know, it's a staff person, the networking alone is just, you can't even put a value to it. And then you find out that, hey, that works, that didn't work, but there are just hours and hours of information. I mean, some of it, Mike and I, don't want to speak for him, but we'll be sharing at our safety committee, you know, kind of on the safety aspects of what we saw for the conference, some of the lectures that I went to.
Monday, right?
Monday. I'm sorry, yes.
My turn to call you, though, right? Let you know.
But thank you. Everyone have a great week.
Councilman Cruz?
Just on the same note, everybody here on the dais knows that redevelopment's kind of my baby, as far as making sure that we get our monies one way, shape, or form. I was very impressed with the fact that several of the conference meetings we had dealt with, lo and behold, redevelopment coming back again in one way, shape, or form, because the legislature realizes, well, maybe we did screw up. So not down and out yet, guys, but it's going to come back in a very limited form.
Senator?
Um, I would say that I did try to write a report, and the Galt Herald was kind enough to print it, to give you some actual details of some of the information that I got at the conference. Also, it will be, or may be already posted on our website under Barbara Payne. It's my report. And we all went to different sessions, and we all got different information, but I wanted you to hear some of the details that I was able to get from that conference. So it's posted, if you're interested in reading it. The other thing I would report on is, I attend the First Five Advisory Committee, I'm on their board, and in case you're not familiar with that, the First Five is funded by the tobacco tax. It was initiative that was passed in the past. And Galt does receive money for the school readiness program, which is at Fair Sight, which is a really good service for our community. But I think it's important for you to know other things that it's about, and they talk about breastfeeding, that's a big, important thing right now, and they pass out literature on that. Another thing that they fund, which has had some discussion, is fluoride in the water. And the City of Sacramento is fluoridated, I think that's the right way to say it, and First Five has put millions of dollars into funding that. So, in addition to that, we had a really terrific article in the Galt Herald, and I'm not just trying to make you guys feel good out there, about my neighbor who has, his whole house has been turned into a model train place. And we got a call from a TV station that does, I think it's Hello Sacramento, or Good Morning Sacramento, what is it? Good Day Sacramento. And they ask if, they're going to come Monday, I believe, and film it, but they ask if the city would like to give him the keys to the city for their program. Well, we don't have keys to the city. But I wondered if the council would be agreeable to issue him some kind of proclamation, maybe making him hold to our quiet zone with his trains, just something for fun. So if the council is okay with that, we'll proceed to do that Monday morning.
Sounds fun.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
All right. If there's no other business, we will adjourn this meeting at 20 after eight. Thank you all for coming.